It was snowy morning, but I'm glad to see everybody here. And trustee George, where the roads okay coming over cabbage?
Just a little fog coming up, Kevin Chiles, as the road went clear. Oh, that did a great job.
Well, that's good because that can be a booger of a road. Is that right? Yeah. Well, good news. That's good. I'd like to start off by thanking President Ryan for the reception last night. I thought it was lovely and good turnout and appreciated that for sure. I also appreciate the folks that sit around the sides of our room. And I thought today I might have you introduce yourself and tell your position. I know we know most of you, but I think out of respect, I'll give you a minute to say who you are and what your position is. Let's start back there with Rayette, please. Thank you, Gib.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Rayette Newman. I am interim dean of the College of Education.
I'm Nate Lau. I'm the dean of the College of Arts Humanities Social Sciences.
Hi, I'm Michael Dakota. I'm the Public Information Representative for EOU.
Peter Eisinger, I'm serving as the interim provost currently.
Kimberly Newman, and I am President Ryan's assistant.
Hi, I'm Candace Watkins. I'm the dean of library.
Good morning. I'm Tressa Seidel, Director of Advising and Online Operations.
I'm Colleen Don Casio, interim vice president for Student Affairs and Title IX Coordinator.
Good morning, Beanie Moses, Associate Vice President for Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging. It's very long.
Lee Ann Case, interim vice president for Finance and Administration.
Jordan Withers, interim director of Student Relations and executive assistant to the vice president for Student Affairs.
Katie Clark on student government.
My name is Julian Harris. I'm student government member as well.
And this is Gib.
I'm Gib.
And we could not exist without Gib. And Angie. Okay. I also want to thank Kimberly for organizing the reception last night as well. Thank you. So let's get started here. This is the, I guess I already tapped that, the February 15th regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call and housekeeping announcements.
Please respond when I call your name. Anna Carbonato.
Present.
Christine Cronin.
Present.
Gary George. Chuck Hoffman. Aaron Laird. Tamara Mabbett. Cheryl Martin. George Mendoza. Cedric Greel. Kelly Ryan. Deidra Schreiber.
Present, V of the Sale Yard.
Brenda Smith.
Present.
Brad Stevens. Carrie Thompson. Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
We have a quorum. As for housekeeping reminders, please have your cell phones on do not disturb. I need to do that myself. And members of the media, if you haven't already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. For the meeting to be effective, speakers need to use the tabletop microphones, keeping the mic very close to your mouth. We ask you to turn your mic off when you aren't using it. And if you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. As we stated, this meeting, I wanted to focus on our students. Every meeting should we be focused on students, but we're giving you some special time this morning. These are our representatives from our student government, ASEOU. I will let them introduce themselves. I got to meet Drew at the fair this summer. He walked into the booth, the EOU booth, so I enjoyed meeting Drew. And then I'll just let you all go over that.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ty Morrison. I am director of Campus Affairs, ASEOU.
My name is Isaac Gensko. I'm the chair of the Student Body Senate.
And I am Drew Lusko, our director for Financial Affairs.
Great. Would you, I'll just let you guys take the stage and organize it the way you want to.
Perfect. I guess I'll start off. So kind of the reason we're here is to kind of share with you all kind of how our student body government works, kind of what we provide to students on campus and how we make an impact and share governance. So as the chair of the Student Body Senate, I'm basically the head of the legislative branch of the student body government. Our government is structured very similar to the state and federal government. We have the executive branch, which is where, I'm sure you've all met Calvin Bennett, he is our president, and the executive branch members where Drew and Ty are. And then we have our judicial branch, which contains our three justices. I don't believe any of them are here today, but that is story. Marshall, Ciara Melchior. Everyone has very fun last names in student government, so. And then just to kind of go over what the senate does, basically whenever President Bennett has a policy that he would like to pass, it has to go through the senate. And we're kind of the check and balance for the executive branch, whereas he would appoint members to certain executive positions. We interview those people and we kind of choose which one we think would be best fitted. And on top of that, senators serve on multiple committees throughout the university. I know I personally serve on the university council, and I'm also the chair of the student, or the, sorry, the Student Affairs Committee. And there's so many other committees, I don't think I can name them all. And something we're really working and focusing on right now is student vitality. We're very grateful for President Ryan's focus on making campus a little more exciting for students. And I know right now we're struggling with our very small budget to do that, but we've been able to utilize the resources we have. We had a pumpkin smashing event, which is always super fun. I don't know what it is, but students love breaking things. We've kind of learned. So then those are usually pretty cheap to put on, since nothing we're breaking is very expensive, thankfully. And yeah, I think I pass this on to Drew, where he'll kind of talk to you a little bit about what our directors do in relation to our student fee committee and our elections committee.
All right. So I'm the money guy, if you couldn't tell by my title. Half of my job is helping to make the budget for ASEOU for the upcoming year. And then during the current fiscal year, telling them how much they have to spend, how do they want to spend that essentially. Now, the other half of my job, I would argue, is the student fee committee, which is incredibly important. Sure, all of you have heard about that before. I come in here every year, at least once to talk to you about it. And I want to tell you a little bit about how that process runs. So beginning in the fall, we have a carryover and forgiveness process. So any unit from last year that either overspent or underspent can apply to get that either forgiven off of next year's budget, which it would normally come out of if they overspent, or request to get some of the money they didn't spend back from the SFC pot. And then into the meat and potatoes, beginning in winter term, we have our budgeting process, which begins with unit presentation. So each unit will get 10 minutes, eight minutes to come in and use however they'd like, and then a minimum of two minutes for questions for committee members to ask them. This year, we had two of those meetings. Usually, we have either one or two. Then we go into our deliberations, where we form our preliminary allocations, what we would like to use as a starting point for the rest of the process. This year, we were able to get it done in one meeting. Usually, it takes two. And then we are now entering the final allocations process, where units can appeal from our initial budget, come in, present again with new information, and then we form our final recommendation to run up the chain through you guys and President Ryan.
I guess I can take it there from Drew. And his job is all serious. My job is a lot more just sort of fun type stuff. As campus, or as director of Campus Affairs, I chair two committees, one being elections for student government, and the second one being senate allocations. And senate allocations, I like to call sort of like SFC's little child or baby, because we get given a very small portion of the budget, and then clubs and students can come request that money for travel, to go to conferences, for events. And then that committee, which is all students who are on student government, deliberate and decide whether it's a good use of the money, whether it's not a good use of money. We have a meeting coming up, I believe this week actually, of giving away quite a large sum of money, hopefully. I've got 10 requests right now from different clubs and different students who want to go use this money to either put on an event, bring someone to campus to give a lecture for their club, and then several that are wanting to travel, such as the ski and snowboard club, or wanting, I believe, go back to Canada and for another skiing and snowboarding trip. I'm going to share just a couple of different events that have happened recently on campus, so you guys can just sort of know. I also work for Eastern Student Entertainment, or ESE as it's known, and recently, we just held Casino Night, which many of you might know, the room, the community room in Hoke on the second floor. We make that whole room sort of feel and look like a casino, music in the background, flashing lights, and then we set up a blackjack table, a poker table, a roulette table, and then students can come in, they get 20 chips for free, they try and go multiply them, and then they cash them in. And the top five students who like cash in the most chips, then all get prizes. It's a really fun time for students to come in and just sort of experience something. We don't encourage gambling all the time, but it's just once a year. We probably should conclude like a, I think next year for my advertising for the event is I'm going to put a phone number that's like, if you need help, here's the number. Also, you should come. This fall, we did a pumpkin smash event. Isaac touched on that. Student government were able to put that on. Our student government is doing a very good job this year of, we cut back our budget a lot last year of that money we typically would use for events. And so this year, we're finding ways to put events on for like under $50 or for nothing at all, just getting donations. To that point, this spring, we're hoping to have the car smash event, which is, Isaac actually helped put on most of it last year of getting a car donated, taking it all, making it all legally safe, and then letting the students come and smack the crap out of it. Pardon my language. Another unit is putting on a stress less event in the fieldhouse. It's coming up here, I believe it's ninth, something like that, March 9th. And they're going to, they've invited all the different units and all the different clubs to kind of put some sort of de-stressing booth up in the fieldhouse. Student government has a bunch of plates that we're going to be bringing, so students can just write their emotions or write their angers on a plate and then toss it and break it, is the way I envision it going. We're in the process of talking to the risk and management department about that. Another, as part of being on SFC and getting to see the background of it, because I sit in that committee this year, when we allocate the money, we kind of can tell the different units what we want to see done or see for the next year. And last year, Drew can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have heavily said, let's, we want to see intramurals come back. And I have all the praise for the athletics department this year of, they brought intramurals back, and there's been like 400 kids signed up. I personally am on the men's basketball team right now, or one of the teams, and it's just so much fun to see the gym full every night for almost two hours. It really is building a connection between the athletes and the rest of the student body. Two other just sort of housekeeping things that student government's done is, me, myself and director of Political Affairs have been working hard on a file retention within ASEOU. We've noticed that over the years, files get stored on personal accounts and professional accounts, because there's accounts for each of our positions, and it causes there to be a lack of continuous storage of files. So we've just worked on a way to strategy so that files are saved throughout the years on a shared drive for all student governments, people to go back and see, and a specific strategy of how they're stored, so they're easy to find. Along with that, I believe Calvin probably spoke to you about this before, but our constitution and bylaws went through a rigorous rereading and readapting this year, because there was a lot that wasn't accurate or contradicted itself. So a lot of that was fixed this year, and I'm very excited to be, seeing that happen.
And I guess to just kind of top that off, and one who just expresses as senate chair how proud I am of the work of our directors, when we hired them, you know, it's a very important job, and they're putting a lot of time into making our university better. And I'm very proud of them for the work they've done, and I'm very proud of the work that our senate has done. Just really, there's a ton of dedication for students here, and I couldn't be prouder to be part of this group.
Well, I'm sure I'm speaking for everyone, but we are all impressed and feel like our future is in good hands with young people like you guys. Thank you so much. Are there questions and comments from our trustees? Trustee Steven.
Yes, hi. Very impressive. Can you give us, what's your overall budget, what the amount you have, and maybe a couple examples of the larger ones and a couple examples of maybe the smaller groups that get money?
Are you talking about SFC or ASEOU?
Well, I'm not sure.
All right. So in terms of student government itself, last year and then with our preliminary allocations, which is what's going to happen with the final, because we're not going to appeal, I'm the one that would appeal, but anyway. I bare bones to us and cut us back to 55,000 last year, leaving no money for office supplies or events or anything like that we'd normally put on. We didn't buy any merchandise to hand out to students last year. We wanted to feel the hurt, the same as every other unit had to on campus. So we put that burden on ourselves. And then for the next year, we're at 55,000, but we're restructuring student government to combine two director positions that we feel can be combined, to be able to put some more money to things like having money for the printer, being able to buy merchandise to hand out to students, and being able to put on open house events every term, which is something that we'd really like to do. In terms of the SFC, we, right now, our preliminary allocation is around 1.2 million, which is where it sat for the last few years. Our biggest unit is athletics by far. They're about between a third and a half of our total expenditure. The next biggest is Center for Student Involvement and Student Union Activities in Hoke, so basically running Hoke and the events that are put on through there. And then we have 15 units in total, including those two, so we have 13 more. And towards the lower end, we have music tours, theater, and some other smaller units like that. But we have things that run the gamut, something, these units are essentially bigger clubs. They've had club status for a minimum of three years. They've all had more than that by now, but to apply, you have to be a club for three years, and there's a process. And essentially, our goal with these units is to increase campus vitality, drive recruitment and retention, and give students a place um, drive recruitment and retention and give students a place to belong on campus.
Thank you. That's very impressive.
Other, uh, trustee Mendelsohn.
I knew your father. I haven't met you yet, um, but I went to college with him. And uh, I really loved your, your last answer. You, you are, you know, you guys are all impressive, but that was impressive what you said. Um, probably more on the student experience. I have my child, I have a student that also uh, attends school here and just from the experience, I want you to be able to share, I don't care if it's academics, I don't care if it's sports, I don't care if it's um, anything that you're doing in terms of intermurals. What's your top three to five experiences, memories, different things that you love about EOU? Because I think we need to hear the things that you love about EOU and then with the goal of us doing those often for you. What are your top three to five things? And I want to hear from each of you, each of you pretty fast. And it, and it doesn't have to be a long story, just I like this, I like this, I like this.
Alright, so top three things for me is football. I came to Eastern to play a sport. I'm not shy about that. That's what most student athletes will tell you is it's sport first. Yes, we care about our education, but we come to a school because we feel like we belong on that team. So without a doubt, football. Um, second would be the professors here. Um, I am proud to be a history major and a math minor, and I've had some fantastic um, professors. Shout out Dr. Howard and Amy Yildin. Uh, we love you guys. And then third, I'd say is the leadership opportunities. Um, I was pretty reluctant to get involved in student government. I don't like leadership roles, but it has been very formative and has changed me as a human.
My top three, um, the first one is definitely the ag tours that we get in the ag entrepreneurship program. It's just really nice to be able to go out and actually see it firsthand. My second one has to be the choir show. Most people don't expect a farm kid from Embler to be in a choir show, and I wasn't expecting to do that and it's really fun. I never thought it would, I would enjoy it so much. And my third one, I have to agree with Drew when it comes to professors on campus, having a really awesome interpersonal relationship with them really puts me ahead of the curve.
My top three, uh, I'm gonna have to repeat one of Isaac's is the ag tours, getting to go and see the industry and what it's actually like out there. Uh, my second one is going, one of, is going to be Casino Night last year. There was just a lot of students there and it was very fun because it's getting very close to the end. Uh, and then my third one is going to have to be working on student government this year and helping with the constitution, doing things that'll last.
So impressive. Other comments and questions? Yes, trustee Smith?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I'm interested in, um, you talked about the student clubs and that they have allocations. But do they all do their own fundraising and does it all go into one pot or how does that work?
Great question. Um, so it depends. Units definitely have the option to fundraise. It is encouraged. Um, some of them have done grant writing in the past. Um, athletics is an easy example. They fundraise about half of their budget. Um, but it all depends on the club. They don't have to fundraise if they don't want, but then all the money they get is the allocation from the SFC. Um, the SFC money is, it all goes into the same piggy bank and it's all allocated from there. Um, we can't tell units as the student fee committee how to spend their money. They give us a projected budget, um, and we can tell them how we'd like to see it spent. And generally, those, those two things are, go together very well, like it's not an issue. Um, but yes, units are free to use that money however they wish after they're allocated it.
I guess I'll add on to that real quick, is there is a difference between a unit and a club. And the SFC does not give money to the clubs. The clubs are expected to fundraise themselves. And then Senate allocations committee that I run, the clubs or individual students can apply for money and we provide it to them. Uh, units cannot apply for money from us because they're already allocated money. This money is that we hold on to and then give away is specifically for clubs, individuals.
So that would be extra money. So they could do their fundraising on their own and they have their own bank account and all of that, but then they could apply for additional funding. Great, thank you.
It, it, I just wanted to share, it's so spectacular, um, and Drew's heard me say this before and university counselor, whatever committee, I'm on ten thousand committees too. Um, you know, what they're doing is, is really a microcosm of the larger university. And the maturity and responsibility in particular, you know, I, I just, it was one of the formative moments for me when Drew and, and I are in this meeting and we're talking about budget cuts and I'm talking about why we do them, you know, the importance of them. And, and then Drew just steps up and he's like, well, this is what I've done, you know, this is, and it's true, it, it's, they're modeling behaviors that are so important for the entire university. And I'm just so grateful to each of your service. And I just wanted to make sure you know how valued and appreciated you are as part of this community.
Super impressed, very impressed. I would like to give, let's see, Juan, Juan, no.
Julian.
Julian, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. Would you guys like to say something as we appreciate you being here as well?
I think they touched on it. Uh, I, I'd just like to add that student government has been incredibly important to me as a student. I'm very honest with it. I'm pretty introverted, but it's, oh, thank you.
It, it's, it's pushed me into some, this is on, right? Perfect. It's pushed me into some committees where I've had to, to voice the presidential search committee. I, I, I've learned a lot of things through these committees and, and how to work in a professional environment, so I'm very thankful for that.
But thank you very much, uh, students. Wow, very impressive. Okay, thank you very much and you're welcome to stay uh, for the rest of the meeting, but I'm sure that you're probably busy, so it's up to you.
Thank you all for your time. We really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come and share with what, what we do for the students.
Thank you. Okay, next we will hear from Professor Kelly McNeil and the Community Health intern Darby McDvitt uh, about a survey of student views that Darby conducted last fall. I don't see them.
We're, we're enough ahead of schedule that they aren't actually here yet.
Uh, let's see, well, why don't we take a quick little break? Take a quick little break and let's see if they show up. Thank you. Miss, I'll give you a little break after our guest speakers are through. Okay, I will reintroduce our, uh, our guest speakers right now. Uh, Professor Kelly McNeil and Community Health intern Darby McDevitt. Did I get it? Okay, uh, and she has done a survey on student views, so I'm really anxious to hear what they have to say. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for giving Dr. McNeil and I the opportunity to come share with you some of the things that we've been working on. My name is Darby McDevitt. I am the Community Health intern and this is my supervisor, Dr. Kelly McNeil. And today we're here to talk to you about the EOU Campus Life Survey that we conducted in the fall.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So a little background on the survey. President Kelly Ryan came to the school with an initiative to increase campus vitality and my supervisor, Dr. McNeil, saw this as a super great way to utilize my internship. And this has been a really awesome way to apply a lot of the information that I've gained in my undergrad and apply it to experiential learning, which has been invaluable as I'm about to step out of college and go into the real world. So we wanted to conduct a survey and collect information on our target population and their thoughts and feelings about campus. I think we got it figured out. Okay, so we decided to conduct a community health needs assessment, which is just assessing the needs of your target population. So, and this is one of the main things that we learned in the community health concentration and a big, a big focus is collecting information from your target population instead of just like sitting around and trying to figure out what they want, we just ask them directly. So the first part of conducting a needs assessment is collecting secondary data and this just means going to the literature and getting a little background and a better understanding of the problem or the goal you're trying to reach. So during my research, I was asking the question of what are other successful colleges doing to increase campus vitality and create a really supportive environment for learning? And I found this really amazing resource. The University of Iowa, Iowa's Student Success Team did a research project in student success in college and they did this, developed this program called the DEEP Program, which is documenting effective educational practices. And in this program, they, they looked at what really successful colleges were doing and compared them and found what they had in common and found these six pillars. And one of the pillars was that they were really true to their mission. And one thing I love about EOU's mission is, you know, we recognize that we're in a small rural town and we're a small college. And that way we can give our students really personalized attention and education and a needs assessment is a fantastic way to do this. And another one of the pillars was that they were all committed to creating an environment that was focused on educational advantage. And one thing I realized through my internship is that this is super supportive of, supportive of this pillar. And, you know, applying everything that I've learned in my undergraduate and actually using that information, because after you finish those classes, kind of like well, I learned all that information, but how am I actually going to use it? And this has been a great opportunity for me to actually use that information. So the next part of a needs assessment is collecting your primary data. So this is kind of where our survey comes into play. So the first part of collecting primary data is you identify a problem. And in this, or in this case, we identified a goal that we want to increase campus vitality. And then we determined our design. There's a lot of different ways that you can collect this information, including focus groups or interviews. We decided to go with a survey. Kelly and I love surveys. And then we collected that data, analyzed it, and now we're here providing you feedback so that we can actually do something with that information. So then we developed our survey. So the first thing that we did when developing the survey is I went to one of Dr. McNeil's community health classes and they actually helped me put together a lot of the survey. So we kind of, you know, asked ourselves what we wanted in the survey, what questions we wanted answers, answers to and what they wanted you guys to know. And we came up with like lists of different campus activities that students could look at and figure out what they wanted to participate in. And then we took all that information and I went to Qualtrics, our fancy little software survey program. I put together the survey and then we did a pilot test. So Dr. McNeil sent the survey out to different HHP faculty. They provided me feedback. And then I also went back to the community health class and they looked through it and provided me with feedback. And then I took that information and finalized the survey and then distributed it. So through the survey distribution, it was out from November twenty-ninth to December twentieth. And we advertised it in a couple of different ways, including the student info line. We put up flyers around campus with the QR code on them. We, Dr. McNeil put out a announcement on Canvas and students also received something in their email about the survey. So the survey itself collected information regarding student demographics. We did a three-point Likert scale on campus connection and their connection to surrounding community. We developed information on what activities that they were interested in participating in, times that they were most available, and the best ways to advertise these events so that they actually know about them. And then because the survey was focused on developing information on campus vitality, we wanted to make sure that the students that were providing us input were actually in the area or on campus. So once we identified that they were, we took them to the rest of the survey. And this is just what our three-point Likert scale looked like that collected information on the campus and community. So as for demographics, we had a hundred and sixty-nine student responses. A majority of them were female, ages ranged from eighteen to forty. Seventy-five percent were in person and the other twenty-five percent were in Union County. Thirty-nine percent were first generation college students, thirty percent played on a sports team and a majority were white or Caucasian. And this information is just helpful to collect because then we can identify themes within the, the data that we collect. So then the next section was our three-point Likert scale where we collected information on students' thoughts and feelings about campus and the community by providing them with statements and then they could put disagree, neutral, or agree. So the first one is I feel like a member of the community and fifty percent of students agreed with this statement. And then I feel supported by EOU faculty and staff and seventy-three percent of students agreed with this statement, which is awesome. On the weekends, there are many different activities for students to participate in. Almost 40% of students disagreed with this statement. In the next statement, 35% of students disagreed with the fact that LaGrande offers activities for college students to do. And almost 40% of students agreed with the fact that campus feels empty. So looking at statements like these that have a little negative outcome, we can kind of take these into account when thinking, how can we increase campus vitality and put a little focus on these that had more negative feedback and try to increase those when we're looking to make campus more lively? And then 51% agreed that they would attend more co-curricular activities if they were offered throughout the day. 71% felt that having more events on campus would make it easier to meet new people, and 38% agreed that enjoyable co-curricular activities were offered on campus. In the next section, we asked about activities that they were interested in participating in, and this is just helpful when we're looking to create different events for students. We can refer back to this list and see what they actually want to do. So number one here, events with free food, you know, broke college students, and some of them probably don't know how to cook for themselves. So any event with free food is a great way to get college students there. And then we had a lot of other really good feedback, cooking classes, pet therapy, free yoga classes, a bunch of different stuff that they're interested in doing. And in the next section, we just asked them about advertising. So how can we let them know about things that are going on around campus? So social media was a really popular one. Email and flyers and posters were a great way to get the word out, and an EOU event calendar and text messages also seemed like good modes to advertise to the students. And then we asked them about the best day of the week, which was Thursday, Friday, and Saturday seemed to be the best days to hold the events, and then later in the day seemed to be when more students were available. As for future directions, this information is super useful when we're trying to create intervention plans for students. So in the, as a part of the community health process, we do these needs assessments, and then we utilize them to create really effective intervention plans because all that information is coming directly from your target population and their needs and their wants. So Dr. McNeil and I, as a part of my internship, have already been taking steps forward to utilize this information, and we're planning a stressless event for students that's coming up on March 6th from 11:00 to 3:00 in the Field House. And we've already taken some of the feedback that we've gotten. We're going to have animals there, free food, there's going to be yoga. It's going to be great. And we're also, we're also going to utilize our ability to evaluate the event so we can get feedback on how it's affecting students. And we're also conducting the Walk for Life Program in the EOU Field House, which is Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. And this has been a really great way for us to drive that civic engagement with the community and the school. So I hope that we continue to use tools like needs assessments and use information that we gathered from this survey and create interventions and events based on students' wants. So thank you for listening to me, and I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Trustee George.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just earlier, we heard from the Associated Student Body, and they talked about funding. Is your program that you're having on March 6 funded by the Associated Student Body?
Yeah, so earlier in the term, I was able to meet with Darren Dudo, the interim dean, and they were able to provide us with a little bit of funding from the school, which was super helpful.
I do have a second question. I certainly like the idea of surveying students who are on campus. Have you ever thought about surveying students who are online and having them think about coming to campus?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. The great thing about surveys is that like we can, we can send them out to online people, and they don't have to be in person. So that's definitely a really good idea to kind of gain more information on why they might be online instead of in person.
Yeah, and that fulfills one of the things that the students said, that the campus is empty. So if we get more students on campus, it's going to be less empty.
Yeah, exactly.
Trustee Mannon.
Thank you. A really great presentation, really encouraging to hear that this is a springboard to real life after college. That's, that's not always the case, so it's really terrific. Well done. Thank you. What's the acronym L-A-F-E for the WALK? I couldn't, I couldn't read that far.
It's, I can.
I can see the free coffee part, but not.
It's Learn, Interact, Fun, and Exercise.
Oh, excellent. And is that your concept? Or is that the A-S-E-O-U?
It's, we actually created, I took program planning last year in the wintertime, and we actually created the program through that class. And that's when, I think one of my classmates came up with the acronym, but that's when we started the walking program because we just wanted to utilize our brand-new Field House and provide students and community a free place to walk and exercise when the weather's kind of not the greatest outside.
Nice. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, trustee Valerio.
Thank you. Great, a lot of fun. I love it. A question about the stressless. I understand puppies. What about the pigs? Are they dead or alive?
They are alive. They're, they're little piglets.
Oh, cool. Oh, piglets. Oh, cool, cool.
And we're trying to get approval for miniature horses there, too.
Fantastic. So now a little more serious question. Many times at the end of the survey, whatever surveys we did, we said, we wish we would have asked one more question, one more thing. Is there something that you wish included in this survey when you started analyzing the data? We should have done that. We should have asked something more. Something that in retrospective, when you were elaborating the data, you wish we had to add?
I think, I think we got a lot of information that we were going after, but there definitely is, when I was doing my research before that, I made the survey, I found a really interesting survey that asked about how students, they're important, it was a Likert scale, and it was based off of a level of importance and satisfaction. And I think that would be really interesting to ask the students about is what they, what things that they think are important and how satisfied they are with what the school is offering them.
Thank you. That's great. Congratulations on a good research. Research. Thank you.
Trustee Cronin.
Yeah, hi Darby. I really enjoyed talking with you last night. You know, this is, this is a very impressive project, and I'm just thinking this is an undergraduate project where, in which you've been able to work really closely with a faculty member. This is really scalable to, and comparable actually to a master's level graduate work. So you could actually scale this up and carry this on if you choose to do that. And I know you talked a little bit about that. I guess I would, I would ask, how, so I understand the survey is, you've received input, you've created an event that, that actually checks the boxes, puppies, pigs, and pizza. Who wouldn't want to do that?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm in. But how, how else is this, the results of this survey, do you anticipate will be used to influence and affect and support student vitality on campus? Is it going to go on? Are you going to continue with this?
I think one important thing is that we make the information from this survey accessible to other, like clubs and people that are creating events. Because, I mean, if they don't know about the information that they collected, how can they use it to create events? So I think that's, that's the next step, is just making the information accessible to a lot of different people that are planning events for campus.
How are you going to do that?
That's a really good question. Yeah, I mean, I'm here talking to you guys, and through creating the stressless event, I've gotten to meet a lot of really great people that are super passionate about creating events for students. So that's just another way to just by setting, setting those roots and getting to know people around campus and then letting them know about what like we're doing.
I wanted to share, too. You are having an impact, too. I mean, when I read your survey, you know, I wrote Kelly back immediately, Professor McNeil, excuse me, and I was blown away. I mean, I was blown away, and it helped me think about how to better organize and work with students on this campus and, you know, gave it over to VP Colleen, right? And in making sure that we're informed about what students need. And I also just wanted to share, you know, as someone who's new to this community, I have such deep, deep gratitude for Professor McNeil stepping up here. I was new to this community. I saw a problem, and I said, you know, this is a problem. But Kelly didn't say, Kelly Ryan, go fix it. Kelly said, how can I help? And that means a lot. That means a lot to me, and it made me feel like I was part of this community, too. And that's what makes a good community, not just Kelly Ryan saying something, but Kelly McNeil stepping up, Darby stepping up, all of us coming together to find solutions because it is about all of us. And, and you really have, I mean, this study has trained me better about how to serve you, and Kelly has taught me about how caring this community is and how warm and welcoming it is. And so just truly deep gratitude to both of you.
Yes, well, first, again, congratulations. This is a very impressive undertaking on your part. So you probably have already thought about this, but is this going to become like a yearly type of a survey? Because what would be really interesting is to do like a longitudinal study. So perhaps Professor McNeil could continue on. You know, I'm not trying to put any work on or any pressure, but it only makes sense because you have the basis of, you know, this like a baseline that you took this year. And then if this type of survey continued over time, you would kind of develop more and more, you know, an understanding of how things are improving on campus or whatever other needs emerge from, from the survey. So I would hope that, without putting any pressure, I would hope that you would continue. You know, maybe other students can build on top because this is, this is a great tool. Absolutely. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anna, I think that's an excellent point. I think there's, there's a number of like validated reliable surveys out there that I think that could be extremely useful in a lot of different ways. And I think if I was to do, like, continue to do this over time, I would like to adopt the one that Darby was talking about with the importance and satisfaction, and then watch that kind of over time, too. So, yeah, I think we would definitely beef it up. We kept it really, really short. One, so that we could get responses, and two, so that we didn't get into the weeds about, like, we went down a retention rabbit hole, and we went down lots of different ways. But we're like, no, we're going to, we're really just going to keep it on what they feel about campus right now and how we can like address that. So, but I love that idea, and I think that's a great project to continue working on throughout the years. Yeah.
Trustee Hoffman.
I was just going to mention that trustee Cavanado apparently is going to have some time on her hands coming up. Maybe someone you could, you could recruit. But seriously. Along those lines, though, I guess my question kind of goes back to the research itself. Did you look at how the demographics of your respondents compare with the demographics of online students and on-campus students in particular? Is it a representative population? I mean, it looks like it is, but I was wondering if there was ever an analysis of, of comparing respondents with actual students?
Because our, our goal was to look into campus vitality, we tried to focus more on students that had access to campus. So through my research, I didn't look into online students a whole bunch, but that would definitely be something to look into as like we create another survey.
You need to use your mic. Sorry.
For the respondents, this is the only place I've ever been told to talk into a microphone. No one ever told me they couldn't hear me. So of the respondents, realizing that they were mainly on-campus, do they, is it a comparable population of the actual student population, or was there a selection bias in the respondents? I guess that's my question.
So when we were collecting information on demographics, we asked the students if they were online or on-campus. And then if they were online, it took them to a section where asked if they were in Union County or lived outside of Union County. If they lived outside of Union County, then we just cut the survey there because they don't have access to campus, so they, they can't really provide us helpful information on campus and the community.
Very, very awesome. Thank you. And I agree with Anna that to carry this on and then make comparisons would be even more valuable as time went on. So thank you so much. I didn't catch Darby. What year are you in school?
This is my senior year.
This is your senior year. So that was my question. Are you going to hand this off? I know Dr. McNeil will probably, but is there another student coming along that will take this project on? Or are, how, how secure do you feel that this information is going to carry on?
I would hope that the internships stay around so that we can continue to do things like this because this has been like amazing experience, and I would hope that the internships stick around so that we can continue to do things like this.
Thank you. That was very impressive. So is the board invited to come cuddle pigs or?
Absolutely. It's open to, you guys can totally come. Please. I'm going to be over by the, by the animals the whole time, so you can, you can catch me over there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. McNeil, for inspiring her to do this. I'm sure it will be valuable in her future career. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Let's, I'm going to let you kind of finish the break that we got started in because you did, we're allowed a 20-minute break here. So I think we'll do that, and then we'll jump right into our strategic plan implementation. So you have a few minutes to finish chatting with each other. So you have a few minutes to finish chatting with each other.
Last topic of the day, it will be a review of the annual report and the strategic plan, plan implementation. Sorry, I've got a wallet in my mouth. And President Ryan, please proceed.
So the annual report that y'all received copies of at your tables are there for you to review. Yesterday, we mentioned page 22 and 23 are the actual data of the report, but the entire report is intended for your review of the strategic direction of the university. And of course, this is an incredibly vital part of each of your role as board members. We really value your input and you know, we're of course always hopeful to engage in discussions with you. As a university, we're both working always on assessing the strategic plan in light of frankly, the dramatic changes that have occurred in education over the last five years. So we're looking at each of the outcomes, seeing is this still our goal? Do these need to be revised? And then we're also looking at what are the best ways to measure these outcomes? So in December, we took a look at some of the measurements and we're tweaking some of those. But we also today wanted to share with you some of our performance on the stated outcomes in the ascent. So rather than going through each of these items, because we do realize that that might make you want to leave the board, we thought we could focus in on a few items. Yesterday, you had a report from the foundation, several of their KPIs are at the bottom there. I thought we could take a look at several of the KPIs related to the financial welfare of the university, as well as some of the civic and service learning engagement. And so I've invited my amazing colleagues to join us here today and would love to turn it over to each of them to share some of the work that's been done, the incredible work that's been done to meet these goals.
Well, good morning. For the record, I'm Leanne Case. I'm the interim vice president for finance and administration. I'm going to talk somewhat briefly about three of the financial metrics that are up here on pages 22 and 23. Some of you are very familiar with our fund balance, which I will start with. These KPIs are just a few of the financial indicators that we consider when looking at our financial sustainability at EOU. There are many other metrics that we look at during the year, but these are the ones that pop up in the KPIs. The fund balance, as most of you are aware, is specific to our education and general funds. What you see in the report is the full financial picture for the institution, but the fund balance is specific to E and G, which is state funds and tuition dollars. The fund balance percentage is the fund balance at the end of the year divided by the revenues that we receive in the E and G fund, and that's how we come up with that. Board statement number 11 kind of sets the tone and has our goals for where the fund balance should be. So we strive obviously to stay within that. The financial statements do not provide the level of detail at the E and G level. Those you see in the financial, the management reports that I present. So if you're digging through the numbers, you won't be able to tie back out to the fund balance, these of it. When we're looking at the fund balance and for planning, we always ask institutionally and at the board level, what's the appropriate level of the fund balance that we should have to maintain, given our current risks and potential risks of the future? What's the institutional need for liquidity? And what measures and evaluations should we use for current fund balance and ongoing performance, financial performance? We look at potential risks that are associated. If enrollment declines and stagnates, what should we look at there? State funding declines? We have increases in our costs that are not planned for catastrophic events. All of those things come into planning on where that percentage should land for our fund balance. And we also want to have enough cash on hand for investment purposes and working capital. So all of those things are taken into consideration. This current year between 22 and 23, we saw a 14% decline change from the prior year. However, only the fund balance itself only dropped 4% from the prior year, still within board statement number 11's goal. We did look extensively in 20 and 21 at the board statement number 11. We'll also be looking at that again at the upcoming finance and administration meeting in April. So we'll be discussing that at that point in time. And so it's, there's no, we don't have any issues with where our fund balance ended as far as a percentage on that metric. It does help us. It's a guide. It's been out there. It's somewhat, it's somewhat an Oregon thing, and it's a holdover from the Oregon university system. It's one of their primary metrics and all of the OPUs in Oregon have continued to use it. We all have different percentages that we look at. We all have independent boards. The goals, the boards have set those goals differently at each institution. And that's where ours lies is within that 15 to 25% range. Any questions about the fund balance? We're going to have a lot more discussions about the fund balance. The other one is our, moving into the ratios. In the KPIs, we look at two ratios, the primary reserve ratio and also the debt burden ratio. The primary reserve ratio, I won't bore you with a lot of it, but I will point out that the ratios used in the KPIs are without GASB. The ratios presented on page 41 of our financial statements are with GASB. So there's significant differences. GASB has about a $20 million effect on our financials. So just in case you're saying, oh, well, how come this one is 39% and this one's 15%? That's the reason behind that. You can see that specific impact from GASB on page 62 in note 14, when you start talking about our retirement plan. It's a lot of pages and a lot of things in there. But if you get to that level of detail, you can go that far. Our primary reserve ratio compares our expendable net assets or net position to the total expenses in a year. Again, this is all of our funds, our capital, our grants, our E and G, our auxiliary, that's everything. It gives the, a picture of how long the institution could function using its expendable reserves without relying on additional net assets from operations. And at this point, the best practice ratio benchmark is 0.4. We were at 0.39 at the end of last year. For Eastern without GASB, that was $30 million in net position divided by 77.5 in expenditures. So we could cover about five months of operations at that level. The other one that we look at in the KPIs is our debt burden ratio. It's not considered a core financial ratio, but it is important for Eastern because it's a way that we can long plan for long-term debt impact, primarily in areas of residential life expansion or new construction where we would actually be taking on the debt ourselves. So we always kind of have this one at the forefront because we're always talking about how we might be able to invest in those areas. It's not, it does not, it's not impacted by like the decision yesterday about Losso Hall and that level of debt. That is at the state level. So that is, that is not a debt to Eastern. It's really just our 11F bonds that pawn their play into that. Debt service in this, in this ratio is 1.3 million divided by 72.9 million. That's how it comes up with the 1.7%. So it's comparing the current level of debt service. We only have 1.3 million last year. And then in principal and interest, the expenses last year, and then divided by the total expenditures that we have. Our debt currently included in there is the SLP loan or energy loan and residence life, as well as a small loan that we have on the athletic track. So as we work through our planning for financial sustainability, we look at all of those things. We do understand that there is a gap between strategically, a strategically balanced budget and a financially balanced budget. And so those are some of the things that we're working through with the FY '25 budget. What does that look like going forward? So these, our ratios are also used by HAC in the conditions report. They're used for accreditation purposes, are used for our financial planning. And so you see them a lot in different audiences, in different materials throughout the year.
Questions? I know I'm not a trustee, but I thought I'd just mention something. Leanne, so this is one where generally speaking, we like it when the lines go up. We like it when the little arrows are green, but this is actually one where it's good that it's going down, right?
The debt one?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thanks for mentioning that. Yes, the lower, the lower that is, 0.5 or 5% is the benchmark, the lower it gets, the better off we are. It just means we have more capacity that we could take on debt. Some of you may remember, we had some residence life expansion conversations a few years ago. This was one of the things that we looked at very heavily. Could we afford to take that debt on? And how would it impact our overall financials, our accreditation, our financial conditions report with HAC? So we were kind of looking at all of those things at that point in time.
Are there other questions or comments? This is kind of the meat and potatoes of keeping the doors open. So if you have questions or concerns, please raise them at this time. Yes, Trustee Smith?
Thank you. This might be too big of a question, but I cued into strategically balanced budget and financially balanced budget.
Good key. It's just the difference between looking at our mission, investing in our programs, between balancing the budget. So at times where you've seen us using our fund balance, that's why. We've been investing for the future. We've been investing strategically. We are not able to financially balance that budget. So those are kind of the two differences.
Other questions?
Okay, Colleen? Thank you. I'm going to need Gibbs assistance first. Oh, that was easy.
It makes, exactly. It makes it loads easier.
Repetitiveness.
Thank you. So how do I make it move? That one, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You know, technicalities. My name is Colleen Don Casio. I'm the interim vice president for student affairs, and I'm here with Peter Geisinger, interim provost. We have been working collaboratively over a time to identify civic engagement, service and experiential learning and co-curricular life with regard to how we're meeting the needs of our campus community, how we're meeting the needs of our students, as well as how we're hitting those benchmarks that have been identified for the strategic plan.
No, thank you. Nothing specific here, but again, yeah, it has been a great collaborative effort. Our office worked together. These engagement, civic engagement, for example, is a priority. It's a university learning outcome, but experiential learning also it contained in our Title III project. So that all these efforts, you know, are towards to meeting various, meeting various strategic goals that we have.
Yes, and the information that we are sharing today is about civic engagement, service and experiential learning, internships, co-curricular activities and campus vitality. A lot of what you've heard about already yesterday and today. So these identifiers help us to work with the Ascent 2029 strategic plan. And we've identified that we work with goals one, which is student success, graduate, graduate students with the competence and confidence to succeed. Objective one is all graduates engaged in high-impact experiential learning activities. And then we have the KPIs. KPI one, students complete an internship, practicum experience, research project, or the equivalent. And KPI two is that students engage in meaningful civic service learning or co-curricular activities.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Colleen. I just want to point out that all these efforts, all these bullet points that you saw there are part of the career preparation that we engage in for our students. And so experiential learning, service learning, internships, student employment, career services, activities are all part of that preparation. And we distinguish, well, not really distinguish, but we want to give students the skill when they graduate so they can assume and be successful in whatever job they want to take. But we're also engaged in a long-term career preparation for students so they can actively manage development of their own career and that they have the tools and the experience to do that. Again, we're trying to meet both of those criteria to meet the needs of the market right now, but protecting our graduates for that longer-term career development. So civic engagement is, as I mentioned earlier, that's a university priority. And I can, I can try to read the definition here from that I found, and please bear with me. Civic engagement is working to make a difference in the life of our communities and developing the motivation, the combination of knowledge, skills, values, and motivation to make a difference in the life of our communities. So getting the student practice to engage in their communities, learning maybe in small steps about how our communities work and how processes work, political and non-political, so they can make a difference, you know, in their personal lives, if there's a need there, or the society, the community at large. So this, this is our goal with these. And again, there's often an overlap between experiential learning, you know, and we bring later the definition where it is. I can say it's practical, reflective, authentic. Sometimes these activities are of course also done via civic engagement and so on. So there is a fluid, well, fluid boundary. There's really no boundary. There's overlap there, and we can meet various goals like this. So civic engagement, again, is a university learning outcome, and as that, we are assessing it. And that's the role of our Center for Teaching, Learning and Assessment. They have done the civic engagement assessment last year and collecting the data. So how this works is that we, we have a curriculum map that lists every course, and with every course, there's a checkmark which, which university learning objective it meets. So there's the list of courses where we can go to, and we can see which ones have civic engagement as a component in it. Then the Center for Teaching and Learning and Assessment provides to select a number of courses to be assessed. They provide a rubric on how to assess that. And we are using the value rubrics from the American Association of Colleges and Universities. Value stands for Valid Assessment of Learning in Undergrad Education. So these have been developed over years nationally. A long study, long group tested those, you know, tried to validate them. They have been used by hundreds of universities. And I think that's great value. And for us, having a rubric that is nationally benchmarks and accepted so that we don't rely strictly on internal measure, we're putting ourselves out really for the comparison here. So that data is currently being assessed by CTLA, but they went ahead and based on comments they got when they implemented the surveys, they talked about, they had questions like, well, I don't quite sure how, what is, how can I do this in my course? So the current professional development of faculty is about civic engagement. There's a book study, a self-study, a guided self-study being placed for faculty who participate. And then in May, there are meetings where groups of faculty will talk about best ways to include civic engagement. And that has been the process for CTLA. They're sort of before the rubric, before the assessment, they provide some information on it, and then they follow up the data with professional development to the gaps to see. And next year, we'll be, we'll be evaluating a different university outcome. So we're going through the cycle here. The, I want to give some examples of civic engagement here that we have. And the slide and the following slides, they violate every good advice you get about effective oral voice slide design, but the intent is really sort of the shock and awe message. I mean, you will see the list of stuff that is actually going in there. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but it's, I just mentioned a few, right? There's, EOU has a community writing center. Once a week, faculty and students from our writing program are in the library downtown and providing assistance in writing. I mean, this is, can't get any better than this. Some of these are done, the writing things within courses, others are on the site of courses. In communication classes, students practice with real events, how to effectively communicate information through the design of a flyer, for example. Paul Newbert's history class, they have been out taking oral histories of Vietnam War veterans and finding out how did the war affect our communities, just documenting these importance markers in time and the experiences for the future. Sociology students are engaged in working to, with the food banks and, and other things, designing flyers, you know, developing processes, how to receive food and how to distribute it. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And this is really exciting. Arts, of course, the Arts Center East exhibitions that our students put on. There's also art for the community in which they can come in and use the, and see how we use our workshops that the art, and the art studios that we have, again, create interaction. And also recruitment, as it some target younger, younger folks for it. Education, this is another example really quick. Of course, the student teaching, they're out there in the community with real students, and they're interacting with them and their parents while they do that. And they get a feel for the community as it affects their disciplines, extremely valuable. You heard from, this morning from Darby and Kelly McNeil about what they're doing, the students in the Community Health 412 program. Darby mentioned the Walk for Life program, which take place, which I'm participating in, two times a week, six o'clock in the morning in the fieldhouse. It's really fun, you know, an hour or more of really fast, fast-paced walking together with getting information on health, healthy behaviors, nutrition, and so on. And I have to say, for the most part, the music that they play is music for my generation. So that was, that was really exciting. And the Community Health 412 classes is the program planning course, is also taking place online. And students have to do their projects, the online students, in their communities. And there's a long list here again, which I don't have the time to go through. But these students, these EOU online students, they're getting these experiences in their community and something that matters to them and their communities. Our impact goes way beyond LeGrand with these activities. They are all over the community, and it's one of the great attributes and characteristics of this class and the program. And the program, just one more note before I hand it back to Colleen. One more note, this CH412 class program planning is followed by CH413, which is program assessment, where really they take the events or the activities that they create, and they critically evaluate them. And the reflective part of the whole thing, figure out what was good, what was bad. If we were to continue that, what do they have to do? So it meets so many checkmarks of things that we want our students to experience. And that is fantastic. And if anybody wants all those lists, I'm happy, happy to provide them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peter. The other, another component is the experience, service or experiential learning. And this was really interesting for me because I'm in a different role. So it, it was very enlightening for me, and I'm really excited to be able to share the information. So with regard to experiential learning, the definition was approved by the EPCC in 2021, and it's the Educational Policy and Curriculum Committee. Is that correct? Yeah, that's the acronym. The definition is experiential learning is the careful, carefully designed and direct engagement of students in learning experiences that promote academic relevance, applied meaning. Learning occurs through the analysis of reflection on and integration of an experience or activity in a multitude of settings inside and outside the classroom or lab setting. And it's interesting to note that there are, there are three experiential learning components or elements that must be included in the opportunity for experiential learning, which would be practical, reflective, and authentic. So in order for it to be classified as a course that offers service or experiential learning, it has to meet those three components, which goes back to, you know, looking at rubrics and those types of things. And how do we identify that?
So if I may add to something, they are definitely still aspirational for some courses. We have many, many courses that We have many, many courses that make, meet two or so of those three outcomes. And that's the job of a faculty committee that we're going to form. Uh, when we roll out more experiential education, there's a coordinator halftime position. That is in the Title III grant, so they provide support. And we have been working with a group of faculty and I had a graduate student from business helping me designing a website that is, we call an experiential learning forum and marketplace. This is a website that we're going to roll out soon, where we are asking faculty to submit their projects, past, current and future projects, in which they list certain, uh, of course, what they are doing, but also which students, which level can be engaged in these projects and which disciplines can be engaged. We want to encourage interdisciplinary work, so there may be projects in history that might benefit from somebody in writing also to connect to that. So the, so the forum is sort of a discussion group of best practices led by faculty members to do that. The marketplace is really sort of for students to look there and go shopping ideally and say, hey, there is a cool project and look, my expertise, what I have learned could really contribute to that. And they can actively steer that too. So we're really excited about rolling this out and promoting more experiential learning. And as later data will show, that most students, pretty much all students get such an experience once during their time at E O U. We want them to have this experience more often than that. In their early formative years, really get started with their introductory classes, have this component. And they can build on that and they get more and more responsibility and more and more involved projects going forward. And one more thing is, we try to do it in teams. I mean, we have a lot of individual projects, but to get that teamwork, that taking on real responsibility for part of the project. And you have to be responsible to your peers to do your piece. That's an incredible learning, uh, that we want to take place as well. So we're excited about it, but we have to admit, we are still working on it and we have high aspirations to bring this more often to all students.
Peter, may I ask a quick question about the third word, authentic? Can you help me out with a couple of examples of authentic in this context?
Yeah, I can take any of those projects really that address a real community need that currently exists. And there is, I know Professor Cavanado does real water monitoring with data over years now. And they're sharing that data with the Forest Service and it's part of a, it feeds into a stream restoration project, for example. So that, that's the authentic part. And that's a really challenging part. You can't just do and design an authentic class once and then next year it comes back to the same thing, right? It's no longer strictly authentic. It may still be practical and reflective, no doubt, but it has to be authentic there. And this is a lot of work and engagement of faculty to keep these activities truly authentic year after year, course after course.
Thank you.
The projects within those degrees that apply to experiential learning.
Are you talking about the current slide?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. So yes, um, we collaborated with the Registrar's Office and asked, um, okay, what are the courses, right? What is out there? Um, and by doing a search of the catalog, um, for courses that were tagged service learning, uh, this is what we find, a hundred and seven courses were identified, um, looking at twenty-two degree programs that are represented. Um, and this slide identifies a number of courses that are currently tagged as service learning. So, does that answer your question? Okay. All right. So looking at those courses, we, I, we looked at from twen- summer of twenty-two till current. And, um, so this is what you see here in the summer, there were ten courses that were authored with ninety-four students in the summer of twenty-two. Fall, there were ninety-one courses offered with seven hundred and twelve students in them. Winter of twenty-three, eighty-two courses with six hundred and sixty-seven and it goes on. Um, but if we look at the courses that were, uh, offered this year, twenty-two, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, we see some differences and those are some things that we really want to look at and identify, um, why? You know, are the courses not offered every year? Are they, you know, what's the reasons for a decline in the number of courses that are being offered and/or the number of students that are in the program? So that's some of the work that we have, um, on our strategies to move forward. That was for George.
It's also, we are trying to turn the needle. We're tightening our definition, right?
Yes.
Classes that were tagged earlier on, you know, for the history. We're going to look at them again and see, do they meet our current aspirational definition of that? And there are things we can do. The, the earlier definition might include an, uh, an introductory physics lab, which is certainly, uh, it's an authentic problem, maybe their study or not quite so. Oftentimes, these experiments are not reflective. They're doing a different experiments every week, bam, bam, bam. So maybe what we can do is, is cut the number of experiments actually and say, okay, you do the experiment. At the first week, you analyze it. And then next week, you talk about what could be made better. Where were the problems in your experiment? Why do you have such large errors? I mean, what needs to be done? That really, while reducing the number of experiments, you know, adds a lot more value in terms of what we're doing as experiential learning. So just an example of things where we're trying to turn the needle.
It, it looks like you have more options for our students in the fall and winter of twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's, those have increased, but less students participated in the winter one. So it seems like they have more options, but fewer students. Am I reading that right?
Yes, and that's what we are wanting to get to and to look at and identify. What are the, what are the reasons for that?
Is that have something to do with more online classes? Because they, do they get this same amount of courses offered in experiential learning and service learning online?
Right, and those are things that will, we have to look at.
Trustee Lair. Um, so I had this question written down, I was going to save it, but for fear that you might move away from this point. So kind of going on what she said, I did notice that the C H four twelve that you noted had what that looked like in the in-person and then it noted how they're drawing that into the online. So they must be going within their own communities to those assisted living and other things that were noted there. So I like that linkage and I'm curious, when you dive into here, if there's some of those connective points between an online and a in-person course that could share some of those goals and outcomes? Cause we've talked about that a lot. Mine is around, and I think you're kind of getting to this maybe, Peter, in your, um, more recent statement is the engagement of the faculty in the work. Um, are you finding that some faculty have almost a more natural inclination to include these pieces? Others are, you know, really engaging in the P D side of knowing what it looks like and how to get there. Um, that, that was my wondering is that, that faculty engagement, you do a survey, this comes up as that gap in maybe understanding your current work. So we provide P D for that learning and just being somebody else who offers P D. There's a spectrum of, of appreciation for P D at times. So what does that look like within the faculty?
Yeah, that, it's, uh, the desire, we'll put it that way, for professional development and faculty is not quite universal. Put it carefully, yeah. So we also are working currently on the larger professional development landscape. Because right now, sometimes we're overloading faculty. Many offices, uh, provide something and it overlaps, so it's coming all at once, you know, and, and it's all good, good stuff, yeah. But we want to be, uh, I mean, mindful of the time of the faculty and when they can engage in professional development, not to overload them. I think the forum and marketplace, we're talking about experiential learning. The idea is really to get a seed group of people who are enthusiastic about it and then they can bring it to their colleagues and they can show them how they do it and, and pass on the excitement and the reward of this. So, yeah, but it's going to be a process of learning and education. And some by nature, I mean, in my previous life as a chemistry professor and physical chemistry, laser spectroscopist, I was a labyrinth, you know, I lived, I worked in a dark laboratory. So I see, I want, so sort of start to reflect my nature way back then how I was. But other subjects mend themselves more naturally to be outgoing. And the, the Community Health Program is a great such example. I mean, the title already says what you need to post to do. It's for the community and how to better the community. And so having these impacts is naturally more easier or it's actually more visible probably for somebody to see how they do that. Others can do it, it's more of an effort. So, sorry, long-winded answer.
Yeah, and if I can share, the data that we have been talking about um, has the information that you asked about, but it hasn't been reviewed yet. Um, so just letting you know that. Through the Title III grant and our Experiential Learning Coordinator, um, this, this is the work that we see us collaborating on and doing together and, and moving forward, uh, working with, um, the Title III grant and that. Uh, so I'm really excited about the project. Um, and so, yeah, I think Beanie has more to share.
I, I just wanted to follow up that, yeah, there's, um, a lot of components of what we're doing collaboratively and developing a synergy around the work. Um, one thing that we did last spring and it's been part of the work that Peter's already doing with the website development is students don't really understand what is experiential learning. And so when they're deciding what courses to take, we realized that this is part of the additional work that we need to do is to help students understand the value of taking a course that has an experiential learning component and what that looks like as a benefit for them while they're here and how it plays out into the, their long-term career pathway. And so that is one of the things that as we work and develop these things, we're also recognizing that providing space and opportunities for students to be able to understand that value, um, has been a very, very much an interest to the students. So we surveyed some students, we actually, um, did a, an assessment last spring and that was the biggest feedback that we got from students is, if I knew, I would have been registering for these classes.
Yeah. Trustee Cronin.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to build a little bit on what Trustee Lair was, uh, mentioned and that's the online component. So, um, I recall from my days, uh, um, working that, that assessment of prior experiential learning was a, uh, big draw for, uh, incoming students. And that was where their prior experiences, uh, they could write about those and, and receive credit. Um, and then the other piece for an online student is developing some, some type of individualized course in their own communities that would, um, be an experiential learning, uh, type experience at practicum. So I, I just want to know how those two pieces, um, fold into what you're talking about. I, I understand that there are students that can register for the courses that are already labeled as experiential learning, but how do you also anticipate students from all over the country who are part of E O U's program being able to take advantage of experiential learning?
So, uh, every program has some flexible courses where, where students individually sort of can design their own project or activity. Right, so they can approach a faculty member outside of regular classes and say, I'm really interested in applying what I'm learning in this and I'm suggested doing that. So these are called, sometimes they're fixed numbers, sometimes you can make a course by arrangement, where they can engage in these activities and have that, that opportunity if they are coming up with their own thing, which is good. We want them to do that, of course. So that, that's that, the, yeah, it is, it is difficult with the online experiential learning because of the faculty oversight. I mean, Kelly McNeil is amazing because it's not just a passive thing, students do their stuff. Sometimes they have to help making arrangement and set up assessment for, by somebody else who might be involved in the project and supervising it, sort of, yeah. So it is, it is incredibly work-intensive and we have to keep that in mind. You know, when we, uh, think about faculty time and how they, how they spend their time.
Yeah, it, the, um, that's, that's the key is being able to have a faculty member who's willing to supervise that type of project. And that was always a real struggle, depending on the department, depending upon the professor, whether that was even possible for a student to do. So I, I'm just wondering if this initiative, um, and this goal will make it more accessible to students, that there will be an intention that more, you talk about professional development, that more faculty will realize that this is an important, uh, piece to offer to all students in, including on campus or off campus.
Absolutely, this is absolutely the goal. And as I mentioned before, at various level of the curriculum. And that, we can actually combine, uh, online students and on-campus students in the same class. And then those who need to be physically present at a certain location, they can engage there where others contribute to the project with, with components that they can do remotely and still be part of the whole. And that's particularly attractive for these introductory classes where we want, we have larger student groups who work together. So, and that offers a lot of opportunity. So there's a lot of opportunity for creativity in, in how we execute, uh, this plan. Credit for Prior Learning was interesting at the state of Oregon and the Higher Education Coordinating Commission are currently reviewing and, uh, setting new, uh, standards for credit for prior learning. There were some alignment issues with our creditor, the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. And now they're having a proposal out and distributing now for comment on, uh, yeah, aligning all those and getting them in there. We have, uh, I've shared this with the deans, but Kevin Walker in, in business has been, uh, sort of taking charge of it from the faculty side. So he has been reviewing those standards and already provided his comments to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. So we need to make credit for prior learning, the process a bit better, more streamlined, more efficient, definitely. Because of course, we want to encourage that. And for students to bring a bona fide experience that they had in their profession, you know, into credit and then continuing that degree program. But that's currently a state-level work.
I wanted to share too, I think the power of the, the process as, as Peter described it too. The best way to engage faculty in service and experiential learning is to learn from their peers, right? Um, rather than, than, than administration. Because public universities, we are here to serve a public good, that is part of our mission. And our faculty, our community engage deeply in many cases. And, you know, I got the privilege of sitting in Paul Newert's Vietnam class on the day that students gave their presentations about the Vietnam veterans. And it was extraordinarily impactful for him. And he became a voice on our campus that will help us push this forward. Um, because he enjoyed it. Nicole Howard's working, um, with, with the Hot Springs Lodge and, and looking at that. And all of these projects really are joyous. I mean, there's a lot of hard work, as Peter says, and there's a, a heavy lift in the beginning, but they're so transformational among the students that it really connects you to the joy of what brought you to be a faculty member in the first place. And so, you know, as, as this takes off, there's, you know, the little match, you know, we're hoping it becomes a real big flame.
For sure.
And then at the end is the data here that you can see that I mentioned earlier. This is from institutional research, it looked at just the experience that the students who graduate have had. And, and you can see in the percentages on, it's, it's very, very high, which is very rewarding. But again, it reflects really that they had at least one of those experiences. And so hence, hence those number of high completions, again, which is good, that so many have this experience. But we want to broaden this experience, as I mentioned earlier.
And nationwide, there's a very high correlation between students who engage in particular in service learning because it brings meaning and value to your experience and completion at the university. So the more students, particularly in one hundred, two hundred level classes, that we can get engaged in community-engaged research, experiential learning, the more likely they're going to be able to persist at the university because they will have created community in addition to this really cool project. That, you know, they're going to talk about it Thanksgiving and Christmas and all the other holidays.
And, and our student body, you know, by and large, benefits from applying right away what they learned in the classroom. Of course, we have brilliant students and when they take their, their senior research project, they bring everything together and integrate it and it works great. Yeah, but the majority- Yeah, but the majority really needs to, and seeks to apply what they know, what they learn practically without waiting for that one culminative experience where they expect it to bring it all together.
Okay, so with regard to services and experiential learning strategies moving forward, the graduate data that we just talked about, we're gonna be working with institutional research to identify what data was collection, what was the data collection criteria that was being utilized so that we can refine and/or enhance the, the work that we're doing as well as the data that we're pulling. And also working through the Title III Grant and the Experiential Leadership Program, working with that team to review current listings of courses. How are they being assessed? How are they being put into the catalog through the registrar's office as well? So that both institutional research, the registrar's office, wherever we get our data from is succinct, and we know why and what, what, why it's there and what it's there for. So we're looking forward to that. So one of the things that we recognized, or that I recognize, is that we have two different types of internships. We have academic internships, and then we have another set that I can't remember what it's called. Give me a second.
There are.
Community.
Yeah.
Community internships. So here are the academic internships that we've identified thus far. There are 21 of them that represent eight different degree programs.
Yeah, and we also have to distinguish between internships for credits, and some programs have a, have a course number in there that says internship. Other internships are for paid, and so cannot get credit for it. So it's either or.
Just real quick, on the education side, when you have, you have internships, and then you also have student teaching experiences, but you do have internships. Is that in that bucket or not in that bucket?
Student teaching is not in that bucket that we list here.
That's a great question.
I don't know, if it's a regularly scheduled course that takes place every year. These courses we're referring to, we look at are those upon student requests. Say, hey, I wanna do an internship, will you please, faculty member, will you supervise that for me? And then we, we enroll them, so it shouldn't be, yeah.
Rayan knows that it's, I'd say they have to pay for their internship. I did, actually. They have to pay for their internship.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not working. Of course, they pay for their internship, and then they pay for their student teaching experience, so.
Paid or not, I'm just saying that that's happening. Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Rayan.
Trustee.
Colleen, when you guys, back to the previous slide on the experiential learning, do you guys take into account credits awarded through the APAL class that we offer? Or ACE transcripts that our military students bring in?
That would be dependent upon whether or not that has been scored and identified as a service learning or experiential learning course. So that might be something that we have to look at.
I mean, who, who identifies that or who determines what's looked at?
Right now, the procedure is that students prepare a portfolio, they work with two of our advisors to do that. There is a portfolio preparation class, then the material goes to a faculty member to evaluate. And they really make the decision on how much credit we should award and what the attributes.
And that's for the APAL class, correct?
Yes, for the APAL class, yeah, I think.
So those are being counted in a status?
If the faculty member determines that, yes.
Right, yeah. And then what about the military ACE transcripts?
That I am, I don't.
They are awarded credit for their military training.
That is a good question, and I have to check that out, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, that's also something that's part of the work around Title III is we're kind of aligning our processes. Because things like study abroad, where those are part of the things we're looking at. There are some scholarships who have reflexive components for students, especially online. So we've worked with ROI in the past, when students are recipients, and how do they bring that back? But the process of how that's coded, and also how we, we, we can add them into that designation is part of the work that I think allows us to have these conversations and create some alignment.
Thank you. Chuck and I are having this sidebar conversation. Did we hear correctly that internships, it's an either or, either you get credit or paid? You can't combine those two?
That's my understanding by and large, and it, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I, oh, okay. Dr. Ryan's on it, so. Yeah, so, I mean, that probably, I'm just thinking of a whole bunch of reasons why that, it, it's at least worth looking into to see if it changed, yeah, for sure.
And Dr. Ryan, you might talk to K-12 partners. We just had to crest this same challenge in K-12 in order to allow for students who would be paid in internships as well. And the governor, I know, is very interested in that challenge not being there. And much like you, for K-12, she was unaware that we were not allowed to grant credit for paid experiences either. So I think if you just point out that it's the same in higher ed, they may piggyback it on the change that they've been given to us.
Yeah, and I think too, nationwide, there's an equity issue in asking people to do unpaid labor when they have other things going on.
Yeah. Yeah, in my previous career, I was to Wisconsin, we, we had to be careful with employers because they, there are strict regulations from the Internal Revenue Service of what can be counted there if they get some tax break or something like that. I don't know any details. So an internship has to be a bona fide educational experience. It cannot be labor, you know, a normal job. And so a substantial portion has to have the experience. So we always had to carefully check the faculty with the employer that they are providing this, you know, in the interest of the employer as well.
Yeah, and ordinarily, in other states, you would have learning outcomes associated with that labor that you're performing in the internship. The faculty member assesses if you've met those outcomes by doing, you know, a reflection. And so that's how it comes in for academic credit. So, yeah, interesting, that's, this is a new one for me. Wanna move on, you wanna talk about those?
But where are you?
Sociology, psychology, just move on.
Yeah, go ahead.
So with regard, thank you for that information, because this is what we're striving to do, is look at all the criteria and to provide the most effective information. What we have here is our community internships. We have seven EOU community internship positions that have been identified. And these internships, I know, are paid. So we have, of the seven positions that are identified, five are active during the academic year. The Outdoor Adventure Program Outreach and Engagement Intern starts in the summer. The Accounting Intern is a short-term internship that begins winter term and ends spring term, supporting the height of tax season. We have the HHP Community Health Outreach Intern, Stress Less Walk for Life. You just saw a wonderful presentation by that team. We have the HHP LEAP internship. And then there's the HHP Move Lab, which help, which assists the community health for 12 students in the coordination and inflammation of the Walk for Life. So kind of collaboratively there. What I really like about these, and I'm sure that there are others that can be available, but all of the HHP internship students, they present at Spring Symposium. So it gives an opportunity for the campus community to see what they've learned, how they've learned it, and how they can move forward.
Yeah, and Trustee Mandela is very well aware of the LEAP intern, because the LEAP intern, the LEAP is the Laboratory for Exercise Assessment and Performance in the new Field House. And we have a contract with La Grande School District for this lab to provide fitness assessments, you know, for teachers. And the students at LEAP intern helps run these tests, and they write a report and submit them to the teacher, which is a, it's a very great collaboration, yeah. Of students, school districts, hardly gets any better than that.
So strategies moving forward with both of the different internship types are developing the project that will identify ways to label courses officially with internships and outline a way to pull enrollment in these identified courses. At the moment, we can't, we don't have that code that will allow us to pull that, so. And then we will also add the information that you've shared about internship, paid, non-paid. So we definitely appreciate your feedback. The other component is co-curricular activities, and this is in collaboration with Student Affairs. Staff, for the most part, the departments within Student Affairs. We have Career Services. We have Center for Student Involvement, which has all the different active clubs. We have the Associated Students of ASEOU are part of the Center for Student Involvement. They talked about Casino Night earlier today. We also have the Outdoor Adventure Program, and I thought it was quite interesting that it was brought up, that there are 1,092 participants over the last year. There were 39 events, 486 EOU students, 25 climbing groups, and 16 school groups that visited with the Outdoor Adventure Program, probably in the Field House. So we have that. Also, Learning Center, this is already brought out, that Learning Center has partnered with the Satellite Outpost Pilot Tutoring Program at Cook Memorial Library. I thought that was really cool. They're also working with the Corey Brewster and the Summer Bridge Program, offering and providing tutoring in the Multicultural Center, along with math and writing students, as well as drop-ins for all students. So we're doing a lot of collaborative efforts. Kate Gekler, who is the Retention Coordinator through the Title III Program, along with tutors, peer mentors, and lab aides, have been working to organize very fun and different workshops and activities across campus. There was a scholarship writing workshop, a gender identity training, and then there's the upcoming events to celebrate International Women's Day. And then several of our Learning Center staff are currently reading three of the Renee Watson's novels in preparation for authors to visit this spring, so they can participate in the College of Education CCRP series. So a lot of interconnection, interwoven activities, and we're really excited about it. Within residents' life, the, the RAs, Resident Assistance, are tasked with providing programs for their residents. So fall term, there were 25 programs that were offered. Winter term, there were 11 so far with two more scheduled. And they are on the topics of community building, alcohol-drug safety and awareness, goal-setting, academic skills, stress relief, DEIB, healthy living, mindfulness and emotional wellness. So a lot of things happening there. Our most recent events with regard to campus vitality, we've heard a lot about that these last couple of days. You know, we had National Popcorn Day in January, on January 19th. We had Night Against Procrastination on February 2nd. We just finished the Cornhole Tournament, and Mike Fisher, I think, won, and I can't remember the student's name. But yeah, so it was a fun event. And then there's the Gender Inclusivity Training that occurred on February 8th. Upcoming events is the Seed Conference on February 17. We have National Sticky Bun Day on February 21st. That's gonna be in Hope, come and get a cinnamon roll. And then there's Design Your Own Temporary Tattoo, not Taboo, Tattoo on February 23rd in the Multicultural Center.
And what didn't make the list, I should add, on Friday supposedly, there's a cooking competition between Sodexo and Students.
Oh.
And yours truly and Dean Rumman, and Newman are judges for it.
Oh.
We're preparing ourselves, eating very little in the morning to get ready for the afternoon.
And that's what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. I, I mean, to me, that's what education is all about, is preparing our students for future involvement in communities and, and with peers. It's, that's awesome, very good. I was wondering what the Procrastination Night was. Is that getting kids to get their homework done on time?
That was hosted by the library, so it was like a study night, actually. It was really, really cool. Is Candace in here?
Yes.
Me, Candace, do you wanna speak to it? Because it is a neat idea.
We'll need you to do it on a mic, though, Candace. Candace, we need you to do it on a mic.
We got roles, Candace.
Well, people do need to hear what you're saying on the net.
So the Night Against Procrastination, the, the one in winter term was hosted by the Learning Center. So I can't really speak a whole lot to that one, although the library did collaborate with that one. The library hosts one in the fall, though, and we usually get well over 100 students in. We offer research assistance, we bring the tutors in to get tutoring assistance for the students. And we just do a whole lot of fun activities, offer food. I mean, you can't go wrong with food, free food for students. And then it just, you know, it lasts, we do drawings, raffles, and lasts several, several hours throughout the night, and it's a very successful event.
Thank you, that sounds fun. Curious what the sticky bun is, but we won't go there with glue and chairs or anything, so.
One quick reflection of something that I heard from Peter, when he said, the ability to apply the learning right away of one course or another course, instead of waiting for the big event to happen in your senior year or not. Thank you, that is a change in for me in how I thought about my education. I mean, it almost never happened. Thank you, that's great thinking.
Sticky buns are cinnamon rolls, and we'll be offering cinnamon rolls. Fresh baked. I figured, that sounds wonderful. Okay, any other questions or comments for Colleen and Peter? Thank you. All right, very interesting, very good. Well, that was our final agenda item. I, I did want to ask you with a little tablet, if you haven't already, to write down, and you can do it anonymously, or you can add your, your name to it, but one of these three topics, how the meetings could be improved, what you would like to see addressed at a future meeting, and anything positive that you would like to see continue as far as our meetings are concerned. So if you find a few minutes now or when you're eating lunch, I would appreciate that. That would be good information for us, so, thank you on that. I'll go through those one more time. Yeah, so.
No, my point is, she had, like, today, I'm gonna just say, this was a fabulous agenda. I would probably say, repeat the agenda like this, so the same kind of concept, that if there's other things that you would like to see. I'm not sure you answered any of the three questions.
So how could the meetings be improved? What would you like to see addressed at a future meeting? And something positive that you would like to see continue? So, and be specific if you can, rather than just, this was a great agenda, you know, kinda thing, so. So anyway, a quick reminder.
So anyway, a quick reminder that our committee meetings will meet on April 2nd and April 30th. Our next board meeting will be May 15th and 16th, and that is at the same time as our Spring Symposium, which is always very rewarding. So thank you all for attending and taking time out of your busy schedules, and once again, I'm super impressed with our board and the questions and the demeanor of our meetings, so very, very worthwhile and time well spent. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting, and I believe lunch is ready.